Call the meeting of the President and Board of Trustees to order roll call.
Trustee Benucci. Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Liam.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassid. Mayor Collins.
Here. Rice with the pledge.
Pledge of the President's flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and committee of the whole workshop held on January 12th. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, all opposed. Thank you, that motion carries. Presidential comments?
I just have one. The other day, Mr. Ernie Banks died, and he was so nice to come to the village here two years ago, and signed hats, dolls, T-shirts, whatever he had. Really had a nice visit with the gentleman, and he truly will be missed, so that's all I have.
Trustees' comments?
I have one. I came across a feature on the city of Naperville's website earlier in the day, and I think it's an application or a keystroke that we could add to ours. It lets residents and visitors know about parking availability in downtown Naperville, and Michael has it on the screen there. It also gives information about what streets can be parked on, what time, what hours of the day, what hours it's prohibited from parking. I think it would be worthwhile to explore. Pardon? Yeah.
Are any other trustee comments?
Thank you, Michael.
No other trustee comments, this will be the time for public comments, three to five minutes. There are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the workshop. First item on the agenda is Administration Planning, Building, and Miscellaneous Funds, fiscal year 2015-16 budget presentation.
Thank you very much. Tonight is the second night in our series of discussions on the various corporate accounts. As you know, we did the Streets Department at the last committee, the whole meeting. Tonight will be Administration Planning, Building, and Miscellaneous Funds, and then as well, a discussion on our financial policies. I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Plekum, who will start off the conversation on all the various corporate funds, and then separate presentations by Michael Garrigan and Dean Marquez.
Thank you. What you have in your packet tonight are drafts of the budgets that Administrator Murphy mentioned. We're going to start with the packet, that is, the Administration Finance Summary. Within the first few pages is the Admin Finance Budget, proposed budget for fiscal year 16. It represents about a 1.3% increase overall. 6.187 million for this current fiscal year is the budget, and for next fiscal year it's at 6.270 million. Keep in mind, just over 3.2, actually almost 3.3 million is relating to contractual services for the village's refuse pickup. That's included within this unit. Within this unit also is the Legislative Management Services and Administration, Community Relations, Facility Management, Human Resources, and Information Technology as well. As we go through the budget document, I'd like to point out the major difference, most of the budgets that you'll see are either flat-lined, meaning no changes within the budget itself. The only one that we have to highlight is in the IT Division. The proposal is to bring the current part-time GIS position to full-time. As the board knows, we've been moving in the direction of a little more higher-end technology as it relates to our mapping, as well as deploying iPads out in the field. And I think you've seen some of the work that GIS has brought forward to the village, and with that, staff is recommending that we bring that position to a full-time position, currently set 28 hours a week, if I remember correctly. Other than that, any other highlights within the budget in these particular divisions that we're speaking to? I guess what I would bring up on page two of 11, within legislative program, we have put in some possible funding to update the boardroom as it relates to the cable operations that's down in the cable TV line item, so you'll see that's the reason why that dollar amount jumped up. That will come back to the board for approval, but we did highlight some funding availability for that purpose this year. Additional training for possible new trustees as well is included in that division. Administration Division is straightforward, there's no additional hires, and as you can see from the budget, there's minimal increase within the Division, mostly salaries and benefit related to increases through there.
Tracy, can I ask a question?
You sure can.
I'm just curious, under Administration, why Illinois unemployment insurance has dropped that significantly?
That's directly related to the layoffs that occurred back in 2007, I believe was the year, 2009, if it's...
It was 2009.
2009, sorry. And now we're seeing a flattening of the unemployment costs that we have for the village. So, the good news is, is that our costs have decreased, and when I'm looking at the Reserve Report, we're actually in a decent position. We utilize first nonprofit for unemployment costs, and it's been a good result for us going forward. It actually streamlined some of the unemployment costs over the downturn and the bad times. We were able to not have to pay all of the costs upfront, we were able to stagger our costs throughout a couple fiscal years, which worked out well.
And one more question on that page. Give me an example of contractual services.
Within the administration program itself, we utilize contractual services for things such as recording fees, nope, that's up top. We have contractual services for, I'm trying to think now, what's in that line item? I'd have to look that up, I mean off the top of my head I'd...
Is that in Administration you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be, if you don't mind, Retail Strategies gets paid for out of that fund. They get half out of there and half out of...
A portion of it, yeah.
As well, then there are just, if you have other studies or other projects or details that the village board is interested in having done, that's where we usually grab those funds from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, more than half of the administrative finance cost is contractual services. Trustee Fay just asked, you know, about a piece of it. I went through the various sheets and totaled up, it's about 848,000, so we're missing about 3 million. Is that Waste Management?
Right. Waste Management is on page two, at the top, under non-divisional, 3,278,236.
I looked through every page and didn't see that, I was looking underneath it, I didn't look for a separate line on it. Okay, good. The other question I have quickly is benefits. It varies by organization, but is it 35% range of the salaries?
Yeah, slightly under that, I would say, closer to 30, 18 to 30.
By the time we add somebody, it's that, their salary plus the 30%, so...
Correct.
Okay. One other, we haven't gotten to it yet perhaps, but on the IT, software and licensing, it seems to have taken a step up, which is perhaps understandable, we just expanded it. Is it going to stay up every year, it's going to be about $200,000, or is it something that goes back down because we made a big purchase?
There's several projects we're looking to implement this next fiscal year, so a lot of that is one-time costs. One of the big projects we're looking to do is combine the police department and village email system and move it offline to a hosted provider. In the long run, it equals out to about the same cost versus buying the equipment and maintaining ourselves, so there is a licensing cost associated with that, but the bulk of that is one-time cost to implement certain things for projects.
Next year it might come down somewhat?
Somewhat, yes.
150,000 maybe, or?
Yeah, there's about, off the top of my head, 17,000 to 20,000 of one-time costs this year, or this upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question, possibly Tracy or Brian. On page two, we're back to Waste Management. From fiscal year 2012 to fiscal year proposed 2016, we're seeing about a half million dollar increase. I'm assuming that's in conjunction with the contract that we approved with Waste Management?
Correct.
When does that contract expire? And if we don't know offhand, it's okay, you can email the board, and so we all know.
I'll have to get back to you on that...
Five years.
Yeah, it was a five-year contract, I'm just trying to remember, was it two years ago that we approved that? Maybe, no, two years ago. I think we're two-year of a five-year contract.
That's what I need to know, thank you.
Some of it is growth-related, and there hasn't been a lot of growth within the village, but some of it is due to additional homes coming on. And yeah, as we go along, if there's any other questions, feel free to jump in. Community Relations, if we could move to page four, you'll see it's a flat budget for next year. Programming is considering to be the same, no additional expenditures related to different types of services being provided, all status quo. Facility Management on page five remains the same, it's actually decreased, and that is specifically relating to building improvements being reduced by $30,000.
What is, Tracy?
On page five, the building improvements line item was budgeted at 80 back in this current fiscal year, it's been reduced to 50,000.
And in that regard, it really is more a question of maintenance and upkeep on our existing facilities, it isn't, there aren't any program funds for that at this time, but it does cover, you know, as Alan knows, every so often, things break, and so we have those funds available. I only pick on Alan because the last time he said something about it not breaking, it broke, so...
Within our Human Resources Division, we have two full-time employees that handle most of the work out of that Division. That budget this fiscal year is at 278,000, it's being proposed to be at 274,000, primarily because of reduction in benefit costs relating to choices that the employees are making for their insurance benefits. We've touched on IT, which is on page seven, and if you have any other questions on IT-related issues or programs, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Otherwise, that is the majority of the administration component of the general fund budget, so if there are or aren't any questions, you know, feel free to ask now or later in the presentation, otherwise, I'd be happy to move it along to Planning and have Michael speak a little more towards his Division in the next fiscal year.
Tracy, I just have one question.
Sure.
Regarding IT.
Mm-hmm.
Does the current proposed total reflect the new hire?
It reflects the current part-time position becoming full-time, correct?
Also, you were very quick in covering it, Tracy, but with regard to our healthcare and our wellness program and our wellness initiative, the successes that we've been seeing in that have actually resulted in some rather substantive, it's hard to call them savings, because we're still seeing rate increases. However, our rate increases as compared to our peer group, and as relates to the other members within the, is that SWAM or is that SWARM?
SWAM is health.
It's a peer group that we're in with. Our rate increases are actually much lower than our peers, and it really has to do a lot with our wellness program and how well our employees have been participating. This past year, we had 80% of our employees participate in the wellness program, which is a rather remarkable benchmark to hit, so just wanted to share that news.
Right, and we've budgeted a 5% increase in health insurance costs for this next fiscal year. What we're hearing for renewals at this point is that we will meet, if not exceed that, meaning that our increase will probably be less than 5% globally, which is a great response to what we've done for the wellness program.
Yes, thank you. With respect to planning for the 2016 budget, we are proposing a projected budget of approximately $471,000 and $688. Again, we are proposing to continue having two full-certified planners, along with a full-time secretary on staff. As you well know, the Planning Department is the main administrative liaison with the development community. We continue to be the zoning administrator, will interpret the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, but most importantly, be the main liaison, not only with the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission, but also the economic development aspect regards to development community. We anticipate that 2015-16 will see a real continued substantial uptick in new residential development. Specifically, I've outlined in my staff summary, some of the properties that we anticipate will see potential entitlement this year, 2015. Those include the Solomny property, which is just north of Edwards, we anticipate that that concept will be coming before the village board, and hopefully in the next several months for entitlement. In addition to that property, we're also looking at the Village Center project, just west of the Village Hall, a very important project. We anticipate that that will potentially be re-entitled in 2015, including to that property, as you know, the Vista Point project, which came before you several weeks ago. We anticipate that property potentially being re-entitled during 2015. I've also outlined some other additional properties, regards to the Polo Club, we're in discussions with the Polo Club, the residential component, not the commercial, about getting that property finally entitled, and potentially, the property at the south, I'm struck that north-west corner of Heggs Road and 135th Street will potentially be entitled this year. So that just highlights some of the potential entitlements the village board would be looking at in 2015. As you well know, economic development continues to be a critical component in the Village of Plainfield. We've had an excellent working relationship with Retail Strategies and continue to look forward to working with Retail Strategies. But as it relates to economic development, we, as you know, we're working potentially with a major commercial developer on Route 30 corridor itself. We, as you know, we just initiated a tax increment finance district study, we're working with S.P. Friedman and Lakota on a major project, which will entail a fair amount of our activity in 2015, as it relates to the TIF study, as it relates to eligibility and the redevelopment plan, working with Lakota. So that's something we're excited about, and look forward to working with those two prestigious firms in 2015. As it relates to other economic development, we anticipate several outlots, the Meyer projects coming through in 2016. We also are working with a developer at the Rose Development at Route 30 on an outlot. We're also getting some interest at the Heritage Metals, which is the project at 119th and Route 59, as it relates to commercial interests in the one or two outlots that exist on that property. So, in addition, we also had some discussions recently about some continued development interest on the South Route 59 corridor, concurrent with the more additional housing permits we're seeing in the south side, specifically Spring Bank, the interest we're seeing in Spring Bank, we're beginning to see real commercial interest in South Route 59, specifically the Rizzi's property. As you know, the police department worked extensively to clean that property up, we're getting real active interest in that property. So that's something you'll probably see as it relates to commercial development this year. So that's just highlighting some of the commercial developments that we'll continue to see for 2015. As it relates to planning, long-term planning, again, we're committed to long-term planning. We are currently working on an affordable housing plan. In accordance with state statute, we are mandated to basically come before the village board with an affordable housing plan, so you anticipate seeing that this year. In addition, we'll continue to work on updating the town plan where appropriate, the downtown plan. Also, the village's sign ordinance, we've had a number of variances recently, the village board has recently approved, so we think there's an opportunity to look at the sign ordinance again, and maybe tweak that, modify that in some areas, consistent with some of the current development trends as it relates to economic development. And moreover, one plan that we previously identified last year, but we were not able to get to, is a neighborhood plan, that's simply just trying to have better interconnection, street interconnection throughout the village as it relates to future development in Plainfield. Now, as it relates to staffing needs, we, again, anticipate pretty much status quo regards to having two certified planners, but again, in a perfect world, we think there will be an opportunity potentially somewhere down the road for an economic development coordinator. We think that there's an opportunity to have an economic development coordinator potentially, who will continue to work with our Economic Development Task Force, which has been a great partner with staff. As you know, the planning staff is one of liaisons with our Economic Development Task Force, but we think there's an opportunity to have an economic development coordinator who would potentially work with the task force in the Will County Development Corp on economic development. Or alternatively, potentially, which would, something the village board can consider, is having an economic development planner, and also, is somebody who is also concentrates in preservation. So those will be two potential options that the board may look at, or may consider as it relates to staffing for the planning department. But I think we generally recognize that at this point, it's generally probably status quo for staffing, but I wanted just to highlight those potential opportunities, if there is any support for additional staffing for the planning department as it relates to economic development. Again, we've had a great relationship, we're working actively with Retail Strategies on continued economic development, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you for the excellent report, Michael, and I just wanted to reiterate that a few years ago, the planning department had every cubicle and every office occupied, and the workload that Michael and Jonathan managed to take on is substantial, and I want to recognize them for their efforts, as well as Valerie, excuse me, Merrily, in the planning department. I would certainly support economic development with a planner that focused on preservation.
I have a few comments too. Let me just go earlier apart. Talked about the Polo Club component, residential component, they talking about the entire area or just a piece of it?
That's correct, there's a discussion with the partnership about the entitlement of the Polo Club, not the commercial component, not Dr. Two's property, but the commercial component. So there's a real potential that we see the entitlement finally of that property.
You're not talking about the corner property of Dr. Two's?
That's correct.
You're talking about stuff where the Polo Club itself is?
The actual Polo Club.
Where the soccer fields are?
That's correct.
Okay, that's different. The Village Center, the same owners pursuing that we saw before, you know, five, six, seven years ago, whatever it was?
Same owners, potentially a new concept with some major revisions. We continue those discussions, they're working with a potential developer right now. So I'm pretty confident that you'll see a re-entitlement of that property this year.
Okay, good. Going to the second page, affordable housing plan, downtown plan, site plan review, village sign ordinance, neighborhood plans, can you prioritize those? I would assume your highest priorities are actually supporting developments as they occur, but these are a lot of things that go on in the background. Is one of these or two of these more important than the others?
Well, I think the affordable housing plan is probably has the highest priority because it's state mandated in the law. So...
That'll surface sometime this year.
There's not a lot of discretion in that, something we had to bring before you, just because of state mandates. So we're working on that right now. Some of the other long-term plan, you're absolutely right, our biggest priority is entitlement of new projects, whether it's commercial or residential, that's priority number one, servicing the development community, and actually, the community itself. I forgot to discuss, but we spend a fair amount of time also working with neighborhoods, associations, answering questions, and a lot of those challenges. So, as you know, luckily, we worked through most of the developments, which were basically kind of stalled, we were able to get the last development, well, with one exception, with the final lift done this year, Hidden River, so we're excited that we're basically through that phase, and most of the developments are very active, and we're seeing development in construction, which is great. So we kind of worked through that phase, but now it's working with new residential development.
Which brings up something which is missing, that came up in the comprehensive plan, southwest plan, where did that go? Is that dead? Is that something we still want to put on the list?
Well, I think that's, at the end of the day, it's really the village board's prerogative. It's, you know, there are several drafts of the plan, there was a major revision to the plan. Interestingly enough, I mean, I prepared an actual map just recently, and the area, southwestern areas, you know, is basically fully entitled for the most part. The question is, do we want to revisit that? And I think that issue will come up with the Vista Point re-entitlement, with some of the higher densities that were approved, based on our previous discussions, in order to solidify our boundaries of Joliet, we did approve slightly higher densities down there. So the most of the area is entitled, the question is, do we want to look at some of those entitlements again, as it relates to the densities? And that question, as I highlighted, will come before the board probably this year, because a developer for Vista Point is potentially looking at re-entitlement of their property, which is a fairly good chunk of the southwestern area. And as you know, Spring Bank is beginning to take off, we have several, one developer who's building down there, and we have a lot of interest in Spring Bank, so it's really a question for the village board, do you want to look at that area again, or it's really your prerogative to discuss that?
Well, from my point of view, I'd like to see us look at it, obviously, I think we should revisit the entitlements down there, and one of the keys in my mind that we have in place is now the single-family design standards. Could people incorporate that, then I think we're going to have good developments regardless of the density, and I think it'd be very important, so I think we ought to look at that, so I'd add it to the list as something that serves my opinion, anyway, so. Beyond that, the full-time, we had two proposals, the economic development coordinator. I'm not a strong supporter of having the village staff that position. I would rather see us go with alternative two, if you will, where we have a planner which does some of that, and works with it, but doesn't have the lead role. In my experience, if you're going to try to sell major corporations on coming into a town, you're better off not having the town people itself do the selling, you're better off having third parties bucked in, or the other people that we have working now represent us, then we end up with a much stronger position. We support their efforts, but not try to say we're leading it. So, of those alternatives, I would strongly support the second one. I think you got to have more developers, as you know, I've talked to you every year, we come up with a budget that you got four people's worth of work, and two people doing the work, as Trustee Fay just represented, so I'd like to see you get some additional help, because I think if we are expanding, we're going to need it. I'd like to follow through on some of the things which we've been promised, make sure somebody's got time to go out and check on those, to like, do they really design and build the way they're supposed to, that type of thing, so. It's not just a building thing, it's an appearance thing, which is a planning department function, so. So that's at least where I'm coming from on some of those things, but...
I would, I would challenge your position, Mr. Lamb, with regard to economic development. We had a former trustee who was Economic Development Director here many years ago, Larry Vopel, who essentially secured every large retail on Route 59, including all the big-box stores, and so, in terms of building a relationship with the building community and the corporate community, I think Larry Vopel served us very well.
Any other questions coming?
Thank you for the input, and we look forward to this year. Perhaps with that, I will turn over to Mr. Marquez in the Building Department's summary for 2016.
Good evening. As you see in your packets tonight, and also in the monthly reports that you receive throughout the year, the Building Department has experienced a consistent increase in not just new home permits, but commercial build-outs, remodels, and miscellaneous permits. Along with this increase brings an automatic rise in inspections, as well as administration work. As the proposed 2015-16 budget shows, we are requesting your consideration for converting our seasonal part-time inspector and administration assistant into permanent part-time positions. With a consistent increase of approximately 30% in just new home permits for the last few years, and with another apartment complex project starting this year, there's a factual need for at least these permanent part-time positions. By allowing the Building Department to implement the increase in hours for these positions, our department will be able to operate on a more efficient level in all areas. Although this will be a much, although this will, is a much-needed adjustment, ultimately, I would ask that you would consider hiring a full-time, cross-trained building, electric, and plumbing inspector. This will allow to help with the workload, but will save in hiring multiple inspectors that are only certified in one area of expertise. Our department consists of people who take their positions very seriously, and our goal is to improve the efficiency of the department by performing inspections in a timely manner, along with a more consistent plan review turnaround at this time and during the summer, and even today, we are experiencing a high volume of inspections that have to, that we have to schedule two to four days out at some times. So, everything's pretty much self-explanatory with the figures, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Again, from my point of view, I would support the idea of a full-time, cross-trained, or cross-qualified inspector, but how easy is to find somebody like that? I mean, the building codes are huge books. I'm sorry?
I have one in mind right now, but normally, since the downturn in the economy, even a plumbing inspector who has to have a state license, he has to be cross-trained, and even when Don Bennett was here, he made sure that... And even when Don Bennett was here, he made sure that Greg and I, Greg, the electrical inspector, and myself, were certified as residential inspectors also. So it's the norm now.
Okay, so you can find somebody. That part's good. With the growth we're talking about in residential construction, the new developments that Michael just talked about, seems to me, if we're going to be responsive to developers and builders and make sure that they're doing things properly, we need to support them so that this is the right kind of environment to get things done. And we don't want to be the bottleneck. We want to be able to be ahead of the game, if you will, and support that. We have a good reputation for being very helpful. We need to make sure we got the resources to continue that, in my opinion, so.
Yes, I agree.
I would support the full-time, cross-trained, cross-qualified inspector.
Thanks.
I would agree with Trustee Lamb on that as well. I think it makes sense, actually, if we can, you know, reduce the bottleneck at the point where we're trying to get, you know, a builder to get a home done, to have the inspections done so they can close and get everything completed. So if you're truly seeing the backlog and you think that will speed things up in your department, then I would agree with Trustee Lamb, let's go ahead and do it.
Thank you.
We want to be clear that if that's something we do decide to go forward on, we will have a formal process for doing that. I know that Mr. Marquez mentioned that there are some folks close by that do have those skills, but it also would require us to steal them away from another community and we...
Friendly one?
Well, we got poached, so I guess we'll poach back. I'm joking about that, but nevertheless, it will be formally, we have a formal vetting process for all of our hires, as you know, so.
And in summary, with the administration fund, building and planning, you'll see these be re-presented probably at the end of February globally, along with the revenue projections that we'll have. And at that point, we'll also discuss staffing and staff's summary as far as positions, like what we've talked about tonight, what can be incorporated or what is most available as far as revenue sources. We're, as far as the revenues are concerned, we'll bring that forward to the board more than likely at the next workshop. We were waiting a little bit longer to see how the state's been responding in relation to the new governor being seated and some of the information that we're receiving through the legislative area on income and things of that nature that are coming to the village. So you'll see that come forward, and also we'll have the police presentation at our next workshop. So I just wanted to be clear. What you do have in the Building Department budget, again, is taking the seasonal part-time positions to a permanent part-time position. That's what's currently in the budget. We will discuss further as it relates to any new hires other than that going forward. So I don't know if there's any other questions on the Building Division. Otherwise, I'd be happy to go through the miscellaneous funds. Some of this we've talked to already as it relates to the capital fund, but I'd like to go through briefly and take the time to answer any questions if you do have any. That's the second packet that just so happens to have 11 pages as well. I couldn't do it twice, so it'll probably be the only time this will happen. But page one is a summary of all the funds that we'll be discussing, so if you'd like, we can just skip right through this. And page two begins our motor fuel tax fund, specifically coming from the state for purposes for capital roadway-type improvements. Salt purchase can be taken out of here as well. We touched with this in the capital budget when we talked about it late last year. What you'll see is in street improvements, about $1 million. That's part of our roadway maintenance plan. Alan will be talking about this again when we bring capital back to the board for one more look before it gets approved, so he can get into a little more of the details as to what we're speaking to when we get to the capital plan as well. But if the board remembers, we were going to allocate $1 million of the MFT funds towards street maintenance, annual street maintenance. And that's generally what that is. The $2 million transfer to general can help offset costs for salt as well as electricity relating to street lighting. So the $200,000 will well suffice our purchases that we have out of our corporate fund. Page three and page four represent our bond and interest fund. This encompasses a majority of our debt that the village has. And I say majority, the other portions that aren't referenced in here would be within our water and sewer fund. If there's any specific debt relating to water and sewer only, that's in our water and sewer fund. But other than that, this represents the other issues that the village has outstanding. On page three, the property tax revenue line item is the one debt issue that we levy for that was approved at the end of December. This is coming to a close, I believe, 2019. That particular debt issue will be matured, paid off. So that's the good news there. The rest of the revenue, quote-unquote, revenue sources are relating to transfers from capital as well as a portion from water and sewer relating to some debt issues that have a portion of water and sewer component within them, and then some are capital-related as well. So this just really outlines a majority of our debt service that we pay from year to year. And as you can see, oh, go ahead.
Let me ask you a question about page three. Property tax revenue. Actual 2012 was 113, 219, 19, and the proposed expected budget for '16 is 116?
Correct.
You know what percentage of the tax bill that represents?
Well, our total tax levy is just over 5.3 million, so it's about 116,000 of that.
Total again?
5.3 million.
Thank you.
And as you can see from year to year, the attempt is to make the debt service level. The spike in '12 and '15 are related to refundings. That's why you'll see the jumps on the expenditures. But otherwise, we're running right around 3.1 million in debt service payments within this fund. Page five is our toward immunity. This is where we pay our liability, property casualty, workers' comp insurance. This is, the revenue sources do come from property taxes. This was approved through the levy process back in December. And we are anticipating utilizing a small portion toward a fund balance that's there. These funds within toward immunity can only be used to be paid for these purposes. So we try to run a, you know, not too high fund balance. That's why you can see sometimes within the revenue side, one year will feed into some of the fund balance more than others. But this year, about $45,000 is anticipated to be utilized in fund balance.
Tracy, what is crime policy?
Crime policy is through the police department, and that's a renewable policy every five years, if I remember correctly. At the point that we had it in fiscal '12, it was a separate policy. I do not believe it's separate anymore. I believe it's standard along the liability insurance. And so that will probably go away next fiscal year from a line item on the sheet.
On the workman's comp, $325,000, of course, a lot of money. Do we expect the new governor to have some impact on it? Because that's one of the things I think has been a steady complaint by businesses, the enormous cost of, that they have to bear of that. Do we expect an improvement in that? Any hope of that improvement?
Probably not. And I would say workers' comp is getting smaller and smaller as far as providers for entities like us. So when the market gets smaller, the rates usually do not go down. They usually increase because the, there's not as much supply, for lack of a better term. The demand is there and they can provide the insurance. As far as workers' comp claims, the village is right on par. There's been no amazingly outstanding claims. And so what we're seeing in spikes is not directly related to a whole, a large number of claims within the village. In this workers' comp and liability, we are a part of the SWARM group, which is our risk manages, management group. So we pool our experience along with other communities to help keep our costs low.
And as Brian talked about, we've benefited by our good performance and health. Do we benefit here, or are we just picking up our share of the total?
Well, as with anything, each community will have peaks and valleys. The experience, though, tends to be streamlined then because of that, so we haven't seen any large rate increases because of another municipality's demise, for lack of a better term. It helps to really kind of keep things status quo. And really, the only impacts we're seeing are more market-driven as opposed to large claims that we're bearing for another municipality within the pool.
You're right to bring up the question whether the governor intends on making this a priority. Certainly, that is something that has been mentioned. That being said, we don't see any legislation or anything out there for this particular General Assembly session, so that's why we're being a little pessimistic that if there is to be anything, it probably will be in future fiscal years. I do know that in listening to the Lieutenant Governor speak, there was intimation as it relates to local government distributive funds possibly being used as part of their budget-solving strategy. One of the, all of branches that was handed out was that at least we might see some type of relief as it relates to workers' comp. So I'm not seeing a one-for-one trade-off, but still nevertheless, it is something that at least they acknowledged and recognized. As Tracy Pluckin points out, we are fairly limited on who we can get to ensure us for workers' comp. You know, municipal and, you know, public corporations have a series of other rules, and it does certainly limit the number of folks that are interested in providing services to that market.
We do have a broker that goes out for bids, two every three years, just depending on what's happening in the marketplace and what component we're speaking to. They keep a pulse in the market, and if they feel that it's necessary to try to get bids, we will do that, you know, every year if we had to. But they work very well with the group, and we've been, we've been successful with that as well. Page six is our audit fund, and specifically for the village's annual audit. This is collected through property tax revenues as well. Current auditor is Sikich, if the board recalls. And what is being budgeted is $42,000, and that includes any possible single audit or additional valuations relating to the audit. So this estimate for this current fiscal year, it was at $38,000. Staff anticipates the proposed budget to be at 42. Again, these funds can only be utilized for this purpose, so whatever is not expended in fiscal '16 will roll to potentially '17, and we can utilize those funds there. But staff's comfortable with, based on the contract language and any additional possible audits that need to happen as it relates to a single audit, that $42,000 is sufficient. Page seven and page eight relates to the police pension fund. Police pension fund is primarily driven from the employee contributions, which is 9.91% of their salary, and then the employer contributions, which is being proposed at $950,000 this year, and that is something that the village levies for as well through property tax revenues. Everything else is relating to investment income, and it is reflected conservatively within this report. Page eight represents the expenditures that the pension fund has as an estimate. And within the police pension, always you will notice that there will be a fund balance at the end of the fiscal year because the intent, obviously, is to increase this fund. So the year, fiscal year '16, we're budgeting about a $1.7 million surplus. In the '14 actual, they actually were at $2.5 million as a surplus, so.
Tracy, on page seven, or maybe chief, realized gain, loss, unrealized gain and loss, unrealized gain and loss is at $300,000 for 2016?
Correct.
$400,000 this year?
That's where it's estimated as is today. Those are valuations that happen at the fiscal year end, obviously, from month to month. We'll get notices from the pension fund. The pension fund is managed separately by a third-party investment consultant that the pension board has. And as you can see in fiscal '14 and '13, their actuals were substantially higher than that, but past results don't always mean future results will be the same. So the staff makes an attempt to try to conservatively guess where the gain or loss will be at the fiscal year end. So this is where we're at right now, based on what we're seeing this current fiscal year. Results have been improving on investment returns across the board. They haven't been glowing, but they've been better, especially when you're investing in more than just a money market, which is what the police pension fund can invest in. They're getting a lot better returns. And IMRF reflects the same positive returns. Throughout the budget, you'll notice that IMRF contributions actually look like they're reduced, and it's only because the market has done better. So the village's portion of IMRF is actually less than what it was in the past. Page nine relates to the DARE fund, which is specific purposes for the DARE program. Contributions are taken in within this fund, and obviously expenditures are taken out. If the board has any questions relating to DARE, I'm sure the chief can answer. More specifics to it, we're reflecting roughly $13,000 to come in for next fiscal year. And then just to be conservative, we've got an expenditure of about $22,000, just based on this current year's estimated amount that was expended. They do have a fund balance of about $14,000 that can be utilized only for this sole Page 10 is the village's current TIF district, the TIF fund. We did touch somewhat on this over the capital budget overview, and when we bring capital back, we'll probably touch on it again. Alan will speak to the specifics. But fiscal '16 is proposing to work towards the enhancements within the village's streetscape. It needs a refresh. I think that we've talked about that a couple of times at different workshops. But the contractual services that you see listed for about $700,000 is a portion of the refresh. Staff anticipates to start that process this next fiscal year. In addition to that, the transfer to capital fund is relating to the initial investment within the streetscape program that was expended originally out of the village's capital fund. So basically, a payback to the capital fund. It was about $7 million that was expended in the beginning of the program. So I know we'll bring the specifics back as to what would be expended within the TIF fund, and obviously, throughout the fiscal year, the contractual services will come to the board for approval when the bids go out.
Also included a line item for the potential of the Trolley Barn project that went before the Plan Commission last week. That should be coming before you for consideration in the coming weeks. They have a little bit of a hang-up as it relates to easements and rights-of-way with regard to IDOT and Main Street, but still nevertheless, we're expecting that to come forward, and so we've set aside a line item toward participating in the facade grant with them.
If I read this properly, then we'll take, if we spend what we're expecting to, we'll be down to about $200,000 in the TIF fund by the end of the year.
That's correct.
Getting important things done, but we need to be careful as we get other facade requests so that we recognize we don't have a whole lot of cushion left anymore if we do these. But these are both very important things. The Trolley Barn, you know, they do have some IDOT issues, but it'd be a great improvement to have that facade looking decent. And the proposal is quite interesting, so I'm hoping we can move that forward because it'll mean a lot to that part of town.
I don't mean to get off subject, but did I read somewhere in some plan that the west wall of that building will come down?
Yes, the entire west section will be removed.
No, not the Trolley Barn, but the additional wing that was built when Raylock was in there.
On the west.
On the west end, correct.
Yeah, the Trolley Barn itself will be maintained. The people who own it or do own it, well, just, they're going to do the east part. They're going to make that their office building, and the Trolley Barn can be made into something. But they're getting rid of a part that doesn't serve any purpose and probably not in very good shape. So it's a good plan. I'm amazed that they're willing to do all that because the Trolley Barn is a throw-in. It's not what they're looking, not what they're investing in. They're willing to donate to the village and more or less, or to the community, not necessarily the village. They're not giving it to us, but it's promising, so looking forward to it.
And the last fund that we have is our alcohol enforcement fund. Alcohol fines are deposited within to this fund, and the revenues are transferred back to general to help offset the costs for the police-related alcohol enforcement matters that they do. That was the summary of the budget that we wanted to present tonight. In addition to that, back in 2010, staff presented and the board adopted the financial policies of the village, and part of the policy is that we'd bring this back to the board for review on an annual basis to make sure there aren't anything that we'd like to look at to amend or to update. to amend or to update, or if you have any questions on any of the policies that are listed. It was adopted in February of '10. If the board recalls, back in April of 2012, it was amended, and it was specifically relating to GASB standards in the fund balance language and the fund balance policy. So they had changed some language within the fund balance, and we had to commit things instead of reserve things and things of that nature. So we had to update the policies for some language change. And then last year, we redefined some of the fund balance policies and made them a little more specific as to what to do with some of the fund balances within the village. So that was the modification that happened last April. At this time, staff doesn't have any recommendations for updates to the financial policies or the exhibits attached. We're still reviewing them based on what the current market's doing. We may review them a little bit more as the months go on over the summer and come back with some recommendations. But at this point, the policies are in place. It follows state statutes as far as the investment policies are concerned, and we're comfortable with leaving them as is. But we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on them.
I have a comment more than a question, Tracy. Under financial goals on the first page, the first bullet point says to provide full value for each tax dollar. And I think it's important that all of us remember that continually, that what funds this building, what funds your salaries, what funds everything we do comes from taxpayer dollars. I'm not proposing any modification, but if something could be stated as an introductory comment that puts that as the premise for which all finances are managed in the village, am I making sense?
Yeah.
I think it would be very important, very important.
It fits in quite well, actually. We have a mission statement within the budget document, but you're absolutely right.
Overall, looking through it again, I think it provides, you know, objectives, what you need to be trying to do. And Trustee Fay just mentioned one of the more important ones. But I also say maintain a strong credit rating. The financial community is very important to us. That's real dollars to us. And then the quality of life. So I think the financial goals are spelled out very nicely. The checks and balances in here are excellent. I wouldn't change any of them. I think they keep us on track. It worked very well, and I would certainly suggest we maintain them. If you have suggestions for updating based on what happens this summer, fine. But right now, it's, like I said, the last couple of years, this document, I think, every municipality ought to have. Great policies. It keeps a lot of people out of trouble, and so did a great job putting it together in the first place. And the little tweaks have been nice and additions, but it's still a great policy.
Yeah, one of the things that, when we were going through the rating agency reviews years ago, was that we didn't really have them all, the policies all in one area. They were, they were instilled and in different places, but they weren't necessarily centralized. And it makes the document a lot easier to work with, a lot easier to find, a lot easier to use when it's all in one place. So back in 2010, we finally decided to kind of combine everything that was on the books and enhance it a little bit more, and it worked out well.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, for the feedback tonight. As Mrs. Pleckham mentioned, we will bring the Police Department forward at the next committee of the Hall. And then we'll have further discussion on capital, revenue estimates. Tracy and I are off to meet with some folks to do some further long-term visioning on our five-year revenue estimates. That will give us then a chance to circle back with the Village Board and have a further discussion with regard to the identified positions. I really do appreciate the feedback that we've gotten so far. You'll notice as well, we were asked for some additional, to provide some additional information following the presentation by Mr. Persons. That was in your packet as well. Hopefully, that provided you with some feedback. And again, we'll pick up on those conversations at future committee of the Hall meetings.
Motion was made and seconded to adjourn all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.